Big impact on your life, but how can it be prevented? Well, the first step is knowing if you have something called prediabetes. Take the one-minute risk test today at doihaveprediabetes.org.
Okay.
Never mind, it's five o'clock, we'll talk later.
At five o'clock, we'll call, is this on? Can you hear me?
It's on.
You're on now.
Hello, yeah. Thank you. Call to order, the Village Board of Oregon, Wisconsin for Monday, January 22, 2024. Ask the clerk to call a roll.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Manke, said he was gonna be a little late. McDaniel.
He's not coming.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here.
And Feschen is excused.
Item three, approval of January 8, 2024, Village Board meeting minutes. Make a motion to approve. Tom, Amanda, questions, comments? Changes, corrections?
Peterson.
Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Board members may discuss procedural matters related to the information, such as where the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided with a minimum, maximum three minutes per speaker. Yes. Just remind the board members to speak into the, clearly into the mics, thank you. We have registered Sarah Dewey to speak.
My name's Sarah Dewey.
Speak into the mic, please.
My name is Sarah Dewey.
Thank you.
I reside at 266 North Main, and I'm pleased to say that I'm an official candidate for the Board Trustees. I was reviewing the packet for tonight's meeting, and I saw in the January 8 meeting minutes, a motion which was approved to revise the ordinance, which includes designated committee size. And I believe it's important to create opportunities, promote and support participation in local government by our residents in as many ways as possible, rather than send the message that we accept and support less participation. If there has been difficulty filling committee seats, maybe the solution is to look at the process of communication and promotion of the opportunities, how residents express their interest, and how those inquiries are handled. Candy, I would ask, in the next few days, if you could send me a list of the current open seats by committee, how many applications there have been in the last year by committee and total, who applied, and which of those applicants have been accepted and assigned to which committees? My experience as the executive director of a local Chamber of Commerce in part showed me the importance of including all people interested in volunteering. Once a person has expressed interest, they must be encouraged, appreciated, and find the experience rewarding, so they continue to volunteer and are likely to encourage others to do the same. I believe in the importance of sending the message to residents that our government values them and their voice by creating opportunities for residents to express their opinions, share their expertise and knowledge, and participate in different ways to influence how and what decisions are made that affect the entire community. I ask that you consider the points I've made, perhaps discuss the current process, its weaknesses and strengths, and find ways it could be improved to promote public participation, all before this ordinance is revised and approved by the board. So, thank you for your time. Candy, do you need a copy of this so you can see what I was asking?
Sure, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, anyone else for public comments? See none, thank you. Item five, approval vouchers in the amount of $3,622,632.60. Looking for a motion to approve. Lynn and Tim. Questions, comments on the vouchers? I have one. Page three, last item, 10772, Madison Metropolitan Sewer District. Wonder if I could, someone could explain that to me?
Yes, that's for toilet paper? For parks? No, that's actually, that's just for the adaptive management, the Yara Winds program that we participate in annually. Our annual commitment right now is about 75,000. And what this does is, this is for phosphorus reduction in the Yara River chain, and we are participating in this as a, basically a trade-off, where we're working locally at the farming level and at upstream, upstream measures to reduce phosphorus before it gets into the system, and as such, we get credit then back for that on our waste stream, and then saves us, hopefully, millions and millions of dollars in having to upgrade our equipment down there. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments on the vouchers? Okay, we have a motion.
You do have a motion.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
And Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item six, consent to general stack recommendation, motion to approve the consent to generals as presented, motion. Amanda and Tom. Okay, questions, comments? I have one. Oh, sorry?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I'll see if I can find it. North Standpipe rehabilitation. Is that the water tower out by the highway?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't look in, I've been looking through there for a water tower, but it's not, I guess it's technically not a water tower, so. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Okay. We have a motion second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item seven, Board of Committees, items for discussion and/or possible action. A1, Planning Commission Exletorial Districtions, Certified Survey Map, Modifying Property Lines for Properties Located at 749 County Highway MM in the Town of Oregon. Elise might have a word on this?
Yep, we took a look at this. We've just been internally reviewing our extraterritorial jurisdiction, CSMs, to save some money here, but we had no, no issues here. A planning commission had no comment, so we typically don't, we don't approve or deny, we just voice no opposition and pass that forward to the county and the town.
We do approve, we do have official action to approve.
Okay, I see, correct.
All right, so, looking for a motion to approve. Amanda and Tim, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. I'm sorry, Lynn, did you have a question?
No, I just had a quick clarification question. Is this, this is a bit different of a design than what we saw originally, correct? We see a lot of things, I want to make sure I have this.
We've never seen, you all have never seen this at a board before. This is out in the town on County MM, so south of, you know, where Wolf Street turns into MM, so this is just a property line, kind of redrawing for some folks that are out in the town.
Got it, okay. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Elise. Item two, Certified Survey Map Dividing Property, Create a Zero Light Line Duplex at 1010 Oregon Parks Avenue. We've seen these before. I think it was pretty clear in the packet. Amanda makes a motion to approve. Tom, second. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Item three, Certified Survey Map Dividing Property, Create a Zero Light Line Duplex at 944 Oregon Parks Avenue, pretty much the same thing. Amanda and Tom, questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item four, ordinance number 24-02, An Ordinance Amending the Official Zoning Map for Property Located at 5221 and 5227 County Highway CC to Plan Development, and MR8 Multifamily Residential. The applicant is Regency Property Management, Jefferson Street, Multifamily Development. Let's get a motion on the table first. Amanda and Lynn, and Elise might have a bit to add?
Sure.
Or someone else?
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission obviously recommended this for approval. The main suggestions were more at the SIP or kind of site plan level, so those will carry forward to the next review the Planning Commission will do that gets more into the weeds with details. There was one change that they recommended that we actually just got an updated site plan, small change from the developer this afternoon, but there was a suggestion to add three lanes at that entrance there into the private development from CC, so that there would still be one lane coming into the development, there'd be two lanes exiting, so left and right turn, so just got that. It looks, again, largely the same, but just a widened exit there. There's also, as you can see, deceleration and acceleration lanes that are planned from, on the county road, so folks slowing down or kind of speeding up from the development would have some space there. There's still a traffic study that's required, and we've actually been talking with Jeff and some other developers that might have some projects coming up that would need access to CC that we might try to combine some efforts, so we can try to be efficient with both funding and just time, and maybe look at, since this is a project we're hoping to do in the next couple of years anyway, maybe getting that traffic study done for the entire length of the road sooner rather than later, and then just doing some kind of cost share with those developers. So, we're still working out, need to talk to the county on timing and what that would look like, but in terms of any other kind of road or intersection improvements that are needed, that's still kind of to come, but we at least know that all of those, the three lanes, and then those speed-up and slow-down areas fit within the plan. But yeah, this has changed a bit since you all saw it, I'm not sure if you all saw the, at the November Planning Commission meeting, there was a concept plan that was shared, so this is largely similar to that. There was some redrawing of property lines to make sure that both parcels have fronted, so lot, the building one and four, if Jeff can kind of point those out, those are on the right side of the screen. Those would be on one lot, and then two and three on the left side there, those would be a separate lot, but there's shared driveway access, shared parking, all of that. And the, the buildings would be built in phases, so down to a 200-unit development in total, with multiple, you know, unit sizes and things in there, but the, the first phase includes that L-shaped building, the drive aisle and parking lot to get in there, and then the stormwater pond. We do the developer here, if you all have any other questions, but we actually didn't have any of our neighbors for this area show up to the public hearing, and did get a lot of questions beforehand and answered those largely through email, but we have had a couple of neighborhood meetings too, so I think those were helpful in getting a lot of questions addressed for the neighbors.
So, as Elise mentioned, Jake is here from Reed's, see if you have questions from, for him. Lynn?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to applaud you for the changes that you made. This is very, very, very different than what I remember first seeing, and I think that you took a lot of the neighborhood feedback into account, and I really appreciate that. The stormwater piece, I know is like a really big, important piece for those neighbors, and looks like that's gonna get really well addressed here, so I appreciate the work that you did to make some changes.
Anybody else?
Can you speak to what level of rent you'll be looking for? Is this affordable housing, market rate housing?
Yep, Jake with Regency Property Management. Yeah, so rent levels, it's gonna be 100% market rate. So, what we do for that is we do really thorough market analysis for the area and surrounding areas, and then we base our rents on that.
Thank you. And I echo what Lynn said about, I appreciate the changes you've made to the design, given the feedback at the initial meeting.
Sure, thanks.
Amanda?
Can I just ask you to talk a little bit if you've looked into, you know, sustainability measures, if there's like solar, or any, any, any aspects that you've incorporated that you could talk about a little bit?
Sure, yeah, no, I mean, construction for buildings has come a long ways. The efficiencies in buildings is phenomenal these days, so the buildings are gonna be super highly efficient, you know, everything from, you know, siding, roofing, insulation, everything. Really high-efficient HVAC units, and then we always do all LED lighting to minimize that impact on, on that stuff too. We're not gonna have solar, at least we don't have to plan to, you know, it's always kind of in the future of, you know, things you can always add on, but as far as the buildings go, they're gonna be very sustainable in terms of construction these days, so we wanna use really high-quality building materials and build a really nice product.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries, thanks Jake for coming in, thanks Elise. Item five, excuse me, ordinance number 24-03, An Ordinance Amending the Official Zoning Map for Property Located at 249 and 267 North Main Street from TR6, Two-Family Residential to Plan Development, and MR8 Multifamily Residential. The applicant is North Point, North Main Street, Town Homes Development. Let's get a motion on the table. Lynn and Tim. Okay, the developer, some representative of our developers here to answer questions, and perhaps Elise, if you want to add anything. I think we've seen this before, I don't think there's any big changes to what we've seen today, but.
Yep, I think the, the latest version looks very similar to this that you all saw in one of your December meetings for the purchase and sale agreement with North Point, so this was added as an exhibit there. There were quite a few neighbors at the public hearing for Planning Commission, most of the comments were about stormwater as well as setbacks on a couple different sides of the site, one was kind of the North Main Street, the neighbor to the north there, and then also the setbacks on the rear of the lot, kind of adjacent to those Market Street properties, so we talked about those. The setback looks closer than it is just because of the patios out there, so patios would be about 10-foot setback from the rear lot line, and then the building itself is more, I think about 17 feet from the rear lot line, so Planning Commission wasn't too concerned about that, and then there were some comments about snow storage, and then again, location with that north, the neighbor to the north there, and I know Sean O'Brien talked to that neighbor afterwards, it sounds like in the SIP stage, we're gonna actually see a little bit of a shifting of that six block, six-unit townhome block to the south a little bit, so more of like a 20-foot setback versus a 10-foot setback on the north side there to give a little breathing room, and it looks like there shouldn't have to be too much shifting with the, the drive there. Again, we'll retain that southern portion, the next step you'll see probably in a, later in the spring or late winter, will be a CSM to subdivide the property, so that'll delineate the village-owned park on the south side from the property that North Point needs to do their development, and then we'll have, you know, shared access kind of with that drive aisle if we decide to put in a small parking lot or any other amenities for the park that need to get accessed through North Point's property, and then the Planning Commission will look at the SIP, the specific implementation plan, the site plan for things like building materials and what the facade looks like, and landscaping plan, any lighting that's added, things like that, so that'll be coming in the next couple of months through Planning Commission and the CSM to you all, but happy to answer any questions, and then North Point's architect, Bob Deller, is here as well too to answer any questions.
Board members, questions, comments?
I just make a comment that this again is a good example, I think, of listening to the feedback from the community and making adjustments, so I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you for coming in. Thank you, Elise. Item seven B, Ad Hoc Public Art Committee, one, Artist Request for Proposal, A Guidance for Interactive Park Sculptures, Village Sculptures, Utility Rapines, Murals, and Heart Fair T-shirt Designs. There was an extensive memo on this in the packet. I look for motion first of all. Amanda, Lynn, questions, comments? Anyone?
Can I just clarify, this is not spending village money, this is all fundraised and grant money, is that accurate?
Yep, it's all grant and fundraised money.
Just, I did receive an email over the weekend from some, someone who was concerned about adding more art pieces down to the Triangle Park area, because it can kind of block some of the viewing areas, I guess, for, for the concerts, and we'll be taking that under consideration, and yeah, we don't want to block anything. Really, there was concern over just one piece, I think there might have been concern over like a really large picnic table like this, you know, right in the middle, and we won't be doing anything like that at that location.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, thank you. Item eight, Unfissed, Pissed, None. Item nine, New Business, Items for Discussion and/or Possible Action. A, Acceptance of a $17,882 Donation From the Friends of Oregon Pickleball for the Purpose of Installing Sunshade Onings at the J.C. Community Park Pickleball Courts and Approved Proposal from Baraboo Oning. Can we get a motion first of all? Tom and Lynn? And Jeff might have something on this?
Yeah, it's just, I, it's always exciting when we see public-private partnership-type stuff work, I always push that however we can. We were approached by some representatives from, from FOOP is what they go by, it's Friends of Oregon Pickleball, and yeah, they had raised some funds for this awning. This would be a, we'll call it two-season awning, it won't be up during the winter, the frame will be up, and they'll be anchoring to the existing foundations that are there, and this will just be really nice. I know they had some easy-ups out there this last year, and those did not fare well with, I think, a windstorm, but these are professionally designed and will be professionally installed, so we're confident that this will be a nice, very nice addition to the courts. We just continue to get nothing but praise from people both in and out of the village that have heard about them and, and come to play down at the courts, so.
Thanks, Jeff. What's the surface of the roof?
The top of it? The surface, it's just an awning type of...
But is it reflective?
No. I mean, I don't, I guess I'm, I'm saying that only because I can't imagine it would be.
Yeah, what I'm thinking of is having been in the broadcast booth at Huntune, it's sometimes very difficult to see the field because of the setting sun there, and if there was a further reflection from that, that would make...
No, I mean, it's just gonna be a black, like a black awning you see over, you know, a storefront, that type of thing, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Lynn?
I just wanted to thank the Friends of Oregon, or the FOOP group, thank you. This is the second time in the last, in this month, that we've had a group help fund or improve our village facilities. I think baseball was last time, and they're working on improving some dugouts, and it's just really nice to see some partnerships of people who are using these facilities and helping us out, and I just really appreciate the, the work that they're doing to help improve that facility and enjoy it.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Item 10, Reports of Village Officers, Department Heads and Consultants, This is for information only, Action by the Village Board will be taken. 10A is the Village Administrator Report, questions are marked? Item B, Police Chief Report, Santa Follow-Up and Press Release Regarding Graffiti in the Community. Anything to add, chief?
I would just, would thank the Rotary for partnering with us on a event, it was just a small-scale event, and a few families joined us here that are in this room. We just wanted to do something a little bit more personable, and we teamed up with Rotary Interact Club to do so, we had a great time. The second one is, quite a bit of our village was impacted by graffiti throughout the village, and it was over like a two-to-three-month time span. Through the hard work of our staff, we were able to identify those two individuals and address those matters, and knock on wood, things have stopped now, and we hope it will stay that way.
Thank you, chief. Item C, Senior Center Director Report, Future Senior Center Building Project Community Engagement Update. Rachel?
So, as you can see from the memo, we have a series of community input open houses planned. The first one will be for senior center volunteers, February 9, and from there, we move on to current senior center users and the general public. We're breaking these up a bit just to try to keep the numbers of people coming through more manageable, but people can't come to, if they're a volunteer and they can't come to the one that's scheduled for volunteer, they can come to any other one that works for them. And we had a, what I would call a guinea pig session with our Council on Aging last week, and got some really good feedback from them about the questions that we were asking, and how to better explain different things, and how to change the language in some of the questions to be better able to elicit the kind of responses we wanted to, so we're really looking forward to hearing what the public has to say about what they would like to see in this new building project, so.
Thank you, Rachel. Tom?
As a member of the guinea pig group? The, I think, yes, we did give a lot of feedback, and I know they're gonna be making changes to some of the questions and so forth, but the format is very interactive, it's very easy for people. I would strongly encourage everyone, all, everybody... I would strongly encourage everyone, all, everybody on the board, whoever can, and anybody who's listening to this, to get in and give feedback, because this is, this is your opportunity to find how this thing is going to look or what, what services it's going to provide down in the future. And they're, they're very open to questions, they're very open to ideas, they're looking for, for everybody's input, and I think this is a chance for, for the community to really get out there and really say what's going to be happening there in the core area of our town.
Anyone else? Okay. Attendee Village Indire, Assistant Director of Public Works Report, Equipment Pre-Selection Process For Wastewater Treatment Plant, Phase One Improvement Project. Add, Lauren, or...
I think most of what is important is in the memo in the packet. A couple of reasons that I did want to get it, am I still?
Yeah.
Okay. But I did want to get it in the packet is because this is an unusual process that is very specific to the wastewater treatment plant business, which is itself one that you don't get into that often, so because this is going to be in the paper, the 25th and the first, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this. Things to note, this is not a contract, so these are memorandums of understanding that the village will be working on with equipment vendors. That does get us kind of a guaranteed price on this equipment, but it is not contractual, and our team has worked with Derek, the village attorney, to make sure that everything is in line and ready to go, and that when it is included in the final construction contract, it's all above board. One note on this is that this will really be our first view into what the market for this project looks like. I know there's been a lot of concern, and rightfully so, that prices have gone up so much. We're looking at prices for some very specialized equipment here, and so we will start to get a bit of a preview on what that looks like, and whether we're going to be dealing with something very expensive, or whether we're kind of in line with our estimates, so this will be a great way to kind of view that ahead of the final construction contract bidding in later this year.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Okay. Item 11, Announcements And Miscellaneous Business. Announcements, comments, communicate... I'm sorry, did I skip something? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Lisa. Finance Director Report, Building Permits, Impact Fees And Connection Fees Collected For Year End 2023.
The only thing I want to say is that as you're looking at the numbers and the value for all of the projects that have started in 2023, majority of these projects are just underway, so that value will not be recognized until 1-1-2025, so that'll help us in that budget year. So most of the funds available for the 49 and the, and the 58 unit, none of that will be available as of 1-1, no wait, 1-1-2025.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's a lot of big projects going on, but...
Yeah.
And then the library and the concession stands, since they are village projects, the value doesn't come into play when it comes to tax time, so that value is not included in here. I just have it listed as notes below the building permit area.
As the library, for instance, is that still counted as part of net new construction?
No.
It is not?
No, because it's not, it's not value that can be assessed taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Lisa. Item 11, Announcements, Comments, Communications, Upending Meetings And Events In A Miscellaneous Business, Village Board Members Pray Provide Brief Statements, But No Discussion Or Action Of The Body Of The Shall Occur. One, Oregon Area Senior Center Pancake Breakfast And Bake Sale Sunday, January 28th, from 7:00 to noon. Be there. Two, Madison Community Foundation $10,000 Grand Award To The Village Of Oregon For Public Art Program. Okay, and then Village Board Member Comments. Once, twice. Hearing none. I'm sorry?
Actually, I was just going to say, Carleen is doing fine. Just a, just a report in case people were wondering, she had very standard surgery. She's doing well. She's watching, hello.
Thank you. 11B, Future Agenda Items. This item gives Village Board Members The Opportunity To Place A Topic On A Future Agenda For Discussion And/or Possible Action. Anyone? Seeing none. Item 12. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Sorry to wake you. No, Amanda and Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.